In the Whiteboard, Chapter 231. I know, it's all right.
Here.
Yeah. Public Law 1975, entitled "Open Meeting's Act." Act with notice that this meeting is being provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this public meeting was provided in the notice of January 5th, 2017. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices, mailed to the Nutley Township clerk, advertised in the Nutley Sun and Starlet on January 12th, 2017, posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. Let's all rise and pledge allegiance, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mrs. Kuzin.
Mr. Belzamo.
Here.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton. Mr. Ferraro. Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Kazinski.
Here.
Ms. Russo.
Here.
Mr. Scolera.
Here.
Ms. Sherman.
Here.
Mr. Carnesella.
Here.
Okay, we're gonna move this over to Dr. Blazer, who's gonna start off with the presentation with the Girl Scouts.
Yes, so if all of our Girl Scouts could come down and answer Ms. Ali. Actually, I'll start here. Over the past year, our Girl Scout troop here in town, our beautiful girls, have been working to earn their Bronze Star. We're gonna actually be able to award those to them tonight, the next award on their sash. To do this, they had to identify a project that they've worked on all year, and it's been my distinct pleasure to work with them and Mrs. Roselli. On their project, they completed it today, and it's kind of exciting that we have them here tonight. I'm gonna have Ms. Roselli tell you just a little bit about their project and what they're doing, and then we'll go back and introduce everybody and give them their awards. Okay. These twelve girls standing before you have been Girl Scouts for the past six years. Two years as daisies, two years as brownies, and two years as juniors, always together, right? They have accomplished many things over six years, leading them to the level of juniors and the opportunity to earn their Bronze Award. Hopefully I don't cry, I always cry. As part of the requirements for the Bronze Award, the girls had to complete a take-action project. They chose a community issue they felt they could have some impact on. The girls chose to help in the care kitchen run by both Vincent Methodist Church and St. Mary's Church. The girls had a tremendous impact serving about 100 people that came to the care kitchen on Christmas Eve. They were able to reach people through their singing, talking, serving, interacting, and caring. The room came to life through the interactions and connections that they made that day. That was the first step in the Bronze Award requirements. Next, the girls had to choose their Bronze Take-Action Project. The girls took this very seriously. They wanted to select a project that would truly impact their community. They considered many and really thought about how they could help their school and try to make a change there. Several of the girls felt strongly about trying to affect change in their school with their peers and how they interact with each other. They started to do research, and thus became the idea of the Buddy Bench. The girls wanted to teach their peers how to better interact, strive for inclusion on playgrounds, and have every child feel like they belong. Initially, the girls were going to purchase a Buddy Bench for their school, Yantapwa, as their project. However, they then learned that the Walker Foundation and Scarpelli Civic Association were donating benches to all of the elementary schools. This allowed the opportunity for the girls to reach all of their children in town. They spent many hours contacting and meeting with their principal, Mr. Francia, and superintendent, Dr. Blazer, for permission to talk to their peers, to help explain the purpose of the Buddy Bench. Then they put together a slideshow and skits for their peers to help explain the purpose of the bench. They also went to their school PTO to ask them to purchase books to go with the Buddy Bench. Books were about fostering friendship. Over the past two weeks, the girls have gone to speak to all five elementary schools, telling the children in grades K through three what a Buddy Bench is, how to use it, and why they think it is important. They have been able to learn how to have a vision, set goals toward their vision, act on their vision with hard work and dedication, and ultimately see their hard work pay off with the bench being utilized by their peers. This is a life skill that they will take with them and apply to many more things in their life. Over the past six years, and especially over the past two years, these girls have demonstrated tremendous growth and integrity. They are a wonderful group of girls who have and will continue to make a beautiful impact on this world. They make me proud to be their leader. I'm going to introduce each Girl Scout and give them their Bronze Award. I just wanted to share with you that the assemblies at each school were incredibly well received. You'd have to know how much work these girls put into their PowerPoint presentation and to the three skits they did. I was laughing earlier tonight with Mr. Roselli. I said, "You know, you're gonna have to introduce them because they all play different parts." So I know there's a Julian and a Mackenzie, and none of them are their real names, so I'm gonna count on you for that. During this process, Mr. Smith from the Walker Foundation and Mayor Scarpelli were able to come and meet with the girls and see the presentations. We were able to take a picture with the Buddy Bench. Mr. Smith is here tonight. Mayor Scarpelli could not be. But you should know how very proud you've made the whole community. We really applaud your efforts, your willingness to make sure that everyone feels included and that everyone has a friend. We're just couldn't be happier to honor you tonight. So, I'm gonna come around the other side because I actually have your Bronze Award. Do this one. Mr. Smith, you want to do this with us? I'm gonna count on you to tell me their real names. Caitlin, congratulations on all of your work, your peers, your Bronze Award. I was gonna say you have to follow that. Jennifer, congratulations, your Bronze Award. Elise, congratulations, your Bronze Award. Isabel, hi Isabel. Congratulations, your Bronze Award. Ava. Hi Ava. Bronze Award, congratulations. John Walker.
Delilah.
Delilah, congratulations. John Walker. Caitlin. I think one of her must be a different. Congratulations, good job. Congratulations. Sasha, congratulations. She tried hard to answer those questions today, and it wasn't easy. Another Caitlin, congratulations. Diana, your Bronze Award, congratulations. Last, not Elise, Katie, not Caitlin, congratulations. Excellent job, one and all.
The Walker Foundation partnered with the Scarpelli Association. We raised a fair amount of money paying for benches, but it wouldn't do much good if nobody used them. There's nobody in our group that has the A's. If you talk to different grade school and explain to them why and how you should, it should be done, you guys are outstanding. We saw your presentation around today, and you clearly explained to everyone why it's so important, how to use them. They had questions and answers from the audience. They asked like probes. No matter what question the youngsters asked, you guys, you all gave the good answers. So thank you. It was nice to make a whole community effort. Different associations than Girl Scouts to make something is really worthwhile for Nutley. Thank you.
Can I get some of the sugar girls in front? Well, stay for all the other parents. You can get closer if you need to. Very adult. I knew you were adult. Sure. You can come in the front, we don't mind. Okay, ready, one, two, three. Thank you. Anybody else? Wait, we got another one. Good? Anybody else? All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. So now we're going to have Mrs. Lorraine Kazinski come on, and she's the president of the Nutley Educational Foundation. And if you could, just, as I know that we have some new bases in here, but I know that you will also have hours upon hours with everyone else and all the hard work that you guys are doing with the NEF. You're doing an amazing job, all of you. I was on there religiously for a little while, but my time has since disappeared, but I know that everyone that's in this room that is familiar with the NEF knows that you are all out there doing an amazing job. I believe there's a video piece as well, correct, that you're gonna be showing?
Right. What I first wanted to do was simply to announce that this video was produced by Chris Osajja and Megan and Bridget Windheim, and the talent that we have in our volunteers is just second to none. And this is all done on volunteer time, and it really speaks to who Nutley is about volunteer talent and community, and we keep giving back, and that's what we're about. You're gonna see that now.
My name is Anthony Caruso, and I directed the fall production at Nutley High School, a play written by Ken Ludwig, that starred this ensemble of students here at NHS and was possible because of contributions made by the NEF.
My name is Steven Fidel. I'm on the robotics team. By far this year, we had a great season. We went to four competitions. At one of them, we placed second overall. I'd like to thank Nutley Educational Foundation again, and I hope to see their continued support.
I'm Ms. Roselli, a middle school science teacher here at John H. Walker Middle School. I'd like to give a special thank you to the Nutley Educational Foundation for their support of the outdoor classroom. The outdoor classroom is something all students can benefit from. It allows us to extend our learning outside of the traditional classroom. Some of our classes, we're able to build stems, to get new structures. You can also benefit from a fun art class to reading, to debates, to further environmental studies.
Can I just ask the group to come on up because all of our volunteers and board members, there isn't just one person here. Come on up. Come on up. Chris is hiding in the background. She hides behind the camera. Well, you got to see a little bit about who we are and what we do, and we wanted to a little bit more of it here tonight. And we have a program of where educators will actually come to us with awards, that they're looking for an award from us, to be able to help them fund what the school budget may not be able to do for them. And so we had several requests this year, and we get help from some of the benefactors that we have, like Spencer Savings Bank. And Rula, come on up for a second. Rula is from the bank at Spencer Savings, and if you see our check over there, $1,000 was given to us, and we are earmarking that for the special needs program. And so we'll get that. Rula, you have a few words to say.
Good afternoon, everyone. Spencer Savings Bank has long been a supporter of students and supplemental educational efforts in the communities that have been served. With this in mind, we are honored to present this $1,000 check for one of our wonderful organizations, the Nutley Educational Foundation, to support the purchase of the staphylen, washer and dryer, to basically to benefit the Special Education Life Skills Program.
We'd like to have Mr. Phil Silatano come up.
Just Mr. Ash.
If you would just bring the check back for just a second because I forgot to have this. No, we want to have you in the picture. Rula, come on up just for a second. It's your program. It's your program, and so we'd like the two of you to be there.
Everybody back in again.
Excellent. We'd like to have Mr. Vincent Vicarello come up. Mr. Vicarello comes from the music department, so if you just let him know what he pushes.
Good evening, everyone. Vincent Vicarello, I'm the director of bands here at John H. Walker Middle School. This is my third year here. There's exciting news that comes along with this, but the grant that I'm receiving from NEF in partnership with the Nutley Music Boosters is to purchase four new percussion instruments of a big ticket, so that would be a conservation, a vibraphone, a xylophone, and a brand-new set of, well, they're all brand-new, concert chimes. So this past weekend, we went to a festival in Hershey Park, and our students went and played on these instruments that were just gorgeous, and they looked at me and said, "Mr. V, what's up here?" We get all the hand-me-downs. And this morning, I woke up to a pleasant surprise from Mrs. Kazinski, and my students were extremely happy this morning, so that's what the money will be going to. And we are greatly, we are so happy, beyond words.
Because Nutley has the benefit of an amazing booster club for the music department, and they are here. Because I only, I only know you. Can you introduce your group, please, just a second?
Yeah, most people probably know Sal Scarpelli, our corresponding secretary, and Jill Cusack, our trainer.
And they have graciously donated so that we could do all of the instruments that were requested, so the full $11,000 will be given to the music department.
Mr. V, why don't you have what we did at Hershey Park? Why don't you introduce it to that of them?
Thank you, Mr. Scolera. So this, like I said, this past weekend, all of our music ensembles from John H. Walker Middle School traveled to Hershey Park. That was all of our choirs, all of our bands, and our orchestra. And our concert choir, we all received a first-place rating, trophy. Our concert choir received a superior rating. Our debonairs received a superior rating. Our madrigals received an excellent rating. Our chorale received a good rating. And our mixed concert choir received outstanding overall choir for the day in the competition. Then on the instrumental end of things, the concert band, which is made up of seventh graders, received a superior rating. The symphonic band, which is made up of eighth graders, received a superior rating. The jazz ensemble, which is a club that meets after school, received a superior rating. And our orchestra received a good rating. So we are very excited.
And this is Suzanne. You didn't introduce yourself. Thank you very much, thank you. I saw in the video where Mrs. Ruth Bedford donated $5,000 to the greenhouse at Lincoln School. This is an interesting situation because our principal, Lorraine Rustell, from Lincoln School. We went to the award, and when we were talking about all of the different things that NEF does and some of the things that come before us, Mrs. Bedford, after two weeks, decided she wants to donate to the greenhouse because her mother used to teach, Mrs. Bedford is 99-years-old, by the way, and her mother used to teach at Lincoln School. So it had great meaning to her to be able to do this, and we give that $5,000 to Lincoln School, Lorraine Rustell, for the greenhouse project.
Well, thank you so much to the NEF and to the district for all of your support. This project started out last year as a project from our PTO to grow a colorful vegetable garden, which we still have growing at Lincoln School right now. The students are growing salads, which they will eat later on in this year. And we are so excited now to expand this to more vegetables than just lettuce and broccoli and carrots, and we're looking to do flowers and herbs and just make healthy living and a healthy lifestyle, something that we can incorporate into our everyday. So thank you so much for allowing this to be possible.
The actual thought was that hopefully at some point, the curriculum would expand the greenhouse project to all of the grammar schools. I believe some of them already have a greenhouse. I think Spring Garden has a greenhouse, but I think it's very, very small. And so that's the type of project that NEF would really like to get its arms around, would be to raise money for the curriculum that expands this throughout the entire district. So that will be our focus at some point, once the curriculum expands to the other grammar schools. And so we think that's a lot of who we are and what we do. We don't usually single out a one specific grammar school because our PTOs do a phenomenal job in providing the things that are needed at their school. But when we can encompass a program that spans the entire district of grammar schools, that's when NEF would want to get involved and be able to help. So this was just one of those things where Mrs. Bedford decided that she was gonna have her mark at Lincoln School, and so we're sort of that conduit for her to get it to Lincoln. So we also, if you noticed in our video, you saw our learning tree. And Blair, yeah? Blair, can you talk about your learning tree?
So the idea behind the Nutley Learning Tree is to create a donors-ask-choice opportunity for the Nutley community in general. So instead of teachers applying to a national program, we have a community-based program where we seek out, teacher makes a wish. We try to find somebody in the community, maybe 10 people in the community, even fund a project. So we have about six wishes posted on the website, two of which have already been funded, I believe. A kinetics math program in Mrs. Piett's class has been funded, and Ms. Dwyer requested some chair socks that have been funded, but there's several other programs up there that can either be single-funded by an individual or funded by multiple individuals. And I think Lorraine is gonna speak to one additional donation that is gonna be made tonight, so I'm gonna turn the microphone back to her.
One second.
She's doing the same thing she does here, almost filling in the checks.
While, while she's doing that, what I'll say as fundraising chairman is, things like Ruth Bedford's individual award present opportunities in the community for people that have a special passion about something, to use NEF as a conduit to actually funnel money through a nonprofit organization and have that benefit the children in our school. So, if anybody in the audience, or anybody in the audience knows somebody that has a special passion they'd like to fulfill for our school district, you can work with us to do that. In addition to that, we'd just love you to spread the word about the good works that we're doing. We're hoping to have a major fundraiser sometime this fall that we're still waiting for answers on, but it would involve the whole community and find a great way to raise a large amount of money so that we can continue to fund the types of projects that you see us funding tonight.
One second. We ran into a problem.
I couldn't spell program.
Oh, my God, my knees are on it. Okay, we're ready. To that end, we actually had one of our tree leaves, I like to think of it that all of these requests are the leaves on the tree, and you can pick one of those leaves and you can actually support that, and so when we had a program called TRAPS. Bezin Pendistan, who is bringing TRAPS to Nutley, and when we had that program come to the learning tree, Wintime Plummet graciously offered to fund that program right off the bat, and so. Talking about TRAPS. Let's do a quick picture first.
TRAPS is an extracurricular program for students in fourth to eighth grades. They, it's a process of six workshops where they do hands-on, these are hands-on workshops where they learn how to prepare, how to, how to launch a business, like partnership agreements, loan agreements, they make business plans, they learn about marketing, advertisement, and at the end of those workshops, there's a marketplace where the vendors are students, they sell their own products.
President's been working on this for a number of years, and to bring it to Nutley, to get to know what it was about, how they would implement it, which would be a lot of volunteers, am I right? Again, Nutley volunteerism, and the program is such that it benefits all of the children from grammar school to middle school, and that, that really makes a big impact to the community, and to think that we'll put out all of these business people by the time they go from fourth to eighth grade is just astounding, and so we want to thank Wintime Plummet for their generous donation, and we certainly thank Bezin for bringing it to Nutley, and we'll all encourage you by helping and volunteering what we can, right? Thank you very much. Could you please, I didn't have you speak about the life skills programs for special needs students?
Oh, no.
And I feel terrible.
I do like microphones.
Thank you. Well, I do want to thank everyone on the NEF for this donation and for helping us. We are looking at advancing our life skills programs with the special needs students, and the programs that we've looked at all have facilities that house dishwashers, washers and dryers, to work on what we think of as very simple, basic life skills, but our students really need to work at it, and it develops so many other skills within them, following directions, responsibility, so we're, we're very honored to have it here at the middle school. The high school has a wonderful program already, but we're trying to bring it down to a younger age so that we can start earlier, and that intervention is really what special needs is all about, so we thank you very much.
And that concludes our program. And we thank you very much for your time and for listening, and we certainly invite you to become an integral part of us, either as a member, a volunteer, or a donor. That's where the action is, my friends, so come on and help to make Nutley even better than what it is today as far as education. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to thank the NEF once again. It's just another proud day in Nutley to be a Nutleyite. We're doing wonderful things in the community. It truly is a partnership between the community, the Board of Education, the students, and every volunteer that's involved in making this community better and better every day. I'd like to also open it up to other board members who would like to make any comments on any of the presentations, so if anyone would like to speak, the floor is open for what they'd like to say.
So, thank you, Mr. President. First, I have to go back to the Girl Scouts. I think that was like, you think about the work that was put in, I mean, to earn that bronze star, and the planning, and the efforts, and then I see the mayor's coming, so Mayor Scarpelli at the Walker Foundation, who helped out with the buddy bench, and then the kids, I wish I didn't get to see the presentation, I wish we could elect you to do one tonight for us to see, maybe we can, you know, do that in the future, because that's interesting, but think about that, those young girls, six years together, and where they've come. Then going over to the Educational Foundation, which, you know, had installed and under the new team that's been built here and that's here tonight, taking those forward steps, but that's going to be the future of where we get the extra for our students. You know, I had Mr. V talk about the music, because I thought he'd said it right out from the outset of how they're doing, but think of that, where it will be with the new equipment. It's coming, oh, it's coming, it's coming. So, it all ties together, right? And I'd like to say, my famous statement is, we're about education, music, and sports, and if we can foster all those things in groups like this, that's what'll make a successful school district, so. Thanks, everybody, to you all, you all deserve a hand, we really do thank you.
All right, so we're going to move ahead now to the superintendent's report. Dr. Glazer. If anyone would like to exit the meeting before we get into the really good stuff? You're more than welcome, but we're only giving you 30 seconds. And by the way, the clock started 15 seconds ago.
Well, we're not playing, Colin.
Floor is yours.
So, honestly, it's been a difficult few days. As we mourn the loss of our classmate and friend, Gillian Valu, you also probably noticed that our flags are flying at half-mast, as those around the state at the decree of Governor Christie are honoring Summit Police Officer Matt Tarantino, who also tragically passed away last week. I'm hopeful that the outpouring of support, love, and prayer has been a comfort to their family and friends, and that as we continue to grieve, they rest in peace. Since coming to Nutley, one of the things that's resonated with me is the incredibly strong sense of community. You've certainly seen and heard it tonight, and as I've said before, we really do take care of our own. The fact that the Board of Education is partnering with each PTO to share the cost of a project up to $7,000, like New Coral Risers and Radcliffe School, or that we even plan to meet in the outdoor classroom, sorry about the rain, tonight, on a night when the NEF is partnering with the Spencer Savings Bank, the Nutley Music Boosters, and private citizens to fund instruments for the middle school, washer and dryer for our practical training for our special education students, and the greenhouse curriculum, and on the same night that we recognize our Girl Scouts with the Bronze Award for their effort to raise the awareness about our buddy benches funded by the Scarpelli Civic Association and the Walker Foundation, is really special, special to me. It's done without competition, it's happening in all parts of town, people of all ages and interests are coming together to enhance the quality of education, enrich the opportunities for all of our students, and honestly, it's continuing to elevate the character of Nutley. I also got to see this yesterday, when I participated in the PTO color run, although I won, with board members Danny Cardassella, Sal Valsamo, Charlie Kuzinski, and about 1,000 other students, parents, grandparents, staff members, and friends, and I saw it every night last week, when the Third Half Club and Unico awarded scholarships to our graduating students, when Music Boosters cheered the news that they were finally getting new band uniforms. In the coming weeks, we're going to have a lot of other award ceremonies in the high school and middle school, moving up ceremonies for kindergarten and sixth and eighth grade, and of course, our high school graduation. During each of these events, I encourage you, of course, to not only recognize your own children's accomplishments, but look around, honor all the unique opportunities that we've enjoyed in Nutley, take a minute to celebrate your own contribution, whether it's as a teacher, a taxpayer, a fundraiser, volunteer, coach, chaperone, maybe you're a business owner that donates goods and services. Each of those things help make Nutley the unique place that it is to live and work, and I and the board look forward to celebrating all of that with you. I don't think it can be said often enough, thank you to the students, to the parents, to the staff, to the board, to all of our community members for all that you do every day. Please don't underestimate that you are making a difference, and I continue to be so very proud to be part of that effort.
Thank you, Dr. Glazer. We can move on over to our board secretary's report, Mrs. Ammons.
Thank you, Mr. President. The business office has begun preparations for all of our year-end processes, including closing out purchase orders and following up to make sure that everything that was ordered has arrived in district so all payments can be made, and looking at our financial projections and where we are. At the same time, we're, we've already started making purchases for the next school year, so we continue to juggle both years at the same time, which makes the summer for us an extremely busy time, so while everyone else is kind of winding down for the end of the school year, we're just gearing up. And also, the other event that is taking place in terms of projects around the district is the bid opening for the secure entrance at Washington School is scheduled for a week from this coming Wednesday, so we're hoping for a successful outcome, and that will complete all of the projects that were funded with the 2007 referendum. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ammons. And we have our student representative, Ms. Caterina Rolles. And we were trying, by the way, before you start speaking, I just want you to know, we all tried to petition to see if we can keep you here for one more year. Dennis Williams, I knew that said absolutely.
Thank you. So, not a lot of things have been going on at the high school, it's been winding down, but a great news is that NHS TV3 seniors took top prize in the state for the media campaign, "Ride or Ride Safe." So, the grand prize is a $20,000 driver's stimulator. Simulator?
Simulator.
Okay, yeah, so, so we're going to be receiving that in the fall, so I want to congratulate Mr. Kelly for all the hard work. So, things that passed, there was the music dinner, we have been awarded lots of grants and everything to get better instruments, and as you've just seen as well, even more passes what we just saw, and that's very, very special, this is a music program in Nutley, super strong, as we continue to grow it, it'll, it'll just get better and better, so. Another thing, Friday was prom, it went smoothly, went well, very nice, the group was a very, very nice change, so that was awesome. The decathlon is Friday, so it'd be a great way for our students to get competitive, even though seniors are always going to win. And finals will be the week after that, I believe, with internship presentations, so students on the internship program will come back and present everything they've learned and how high school and our time here has prepared us for the real world, I guess, so it'll be good, and graduation is on June 22nd, so, thank you.
Okay, we now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our Board Regulation 601 allot 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask that you try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, only after others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address the board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board and sign in with Mrs. Cusack before you take the microphone. Will the first person wishing to be heard, please step forward. Okay, seeing none. Mr. Valsamo, would you move academic resolutions, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move academic resolutions one and two. Second.
Discussion. Rolles, Cusack.
Mr. Valsamo? Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scoler?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Cardassella?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski, would you take administration resolutions, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, I move administration resolutions one and two.
Second.
Discussion. Rolles, Cusack.
Mr. Valsamo?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scoler?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Cardassella?
Yes.
Vice President Russo, would you take finance resolutions, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move finance resolutions one through 30, as listed by SOU.
Discussion. Ms. Cusack, Rolles.
Mr. Valsamo?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes, to all, except on number 16, have to abstain on school-based therapy services.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scoler?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Cardassella?
Yes.
Mr. Scoler, would you take personnel, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move personnel resolution one, as published in the Personnel General Report.
Give me a second. Discussion. Rolles, Cusack.
Mr. Valsamo?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scoler?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Cardassella?
Yes.
In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulation allot 30 minutes for these communications. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask that you try to stay within this requirement. As stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me as chairperson, and no one may address the board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, or relevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board and sign in with Mrs. Cusack before you take your microphone. Will the first person wishing to be heard, please step forward. Okay, seeing none. Any old business to come before the board?
Mr. President, not really old, not really new, so I'll jump in here, in between, so I'll be up in our next meeting, which will probably be the last formal meeting.
So I've been up at our next meeting, which will probably be the last formal meeting for Caterina to be here, and since I know her since she grew up, and her father, who's a great lawyer and a friend of Charlie's, I just wanted to state, if you've watched the leadership this year, we've had different students here, but under Caterina, and what she's done in the school, and when you hear her talk about what kids need for the programs, and what's needed in the music sports, and children in need programs, and all the different things, if we're going to put our hands in somebody moving forward, coming out of the Nutley School District, Caterina would be the key person, I would say, in that, when you see how she's represented the school, she's spoken here. So because I can't be here next week, I just want to say, wish you luck in the future. I know you'll be back, you're going to keep coming back. I know you, she's offered to come back and volunteer in the programs next year while she's in college. And yeah, I directed you already, I'm sending you a message. I'm sure she'll be there at some point. But she's also volunteered to come back and, you know, help with the robotics program and the new coding program, which is partially because of her drive being brought into the district. So I want to state, if you watch what's happening, we're students coming out of Nutley last year, this year, there's schools and people in Caterina, I think we're doing well in Nutley going into the future, so Caterina. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other in-between business to come? Any new business? Whereas the Board of Education will be discussing matters, exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJSA 10:412. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education recesses to close executive session at this time to discuss personnel, student matters, and property acquisition. Be it further resolved, that the results of discussion will be made public by inclusion on the agenda of subsequent meaning of the Board of Education, or whether reasons for discussing such matters in closed session no longer exist.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.